Thirty-five percent increase. So it's pretty remarkable and it is helping our students be successful. Next slide. So the third IBHE goal is talent and innovation engine that higher edge has served this purpose. As you're well aware, we were designated a Carnegie one research institution in this last fiscal year. That puts us in the top five percent nationally as very high research activity. But what's important to note here, and it was apropos yesterday, I got my magnet in the mail. You look at the four hundred and seventy-nine institutions that are designated opportunity. And then you look at those that were designated research. In the middle of those two circles, there are only twenty-one institutions in the country that have both of those designations. And many times people competing their research and access and opportunity. But SIU, that is the ethos of who we are. Our research R and D spending is nearly seventy-six million. Twenty-five million of that comes from the state of Illinois, which was a twenty-two percent increase. Twenty-two million came from private nonprofit sources, which is a twenty-five percent increase. So a shout out to our faculty, our staff and our students, undergraduate graduate students that participate in the research enterprise. That's an important aspect again of who we are and how we have students participating alongside faculty. The question about they publish together, many times they do, they publish their works together or they go out and present those. Because if we do the work, but we don't disseminate it, it doesn't have that impact. And I also wanted to highlight here the Office of Innovation and Economic Development. Because that's an important part of what we do in our research enterprise. This office was founded in nineteen eighty-five. It is the primary outreach arm for business development and community engagement. It focuses on the seventeen counties in Southern Illinois. It is funded in part by the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Activity. And many of you had a chance to visit the Gower Translational Research Facility when we opened BioLaunch, which is part of IFRM, which is the Illinois Food Entrepreneurship Research and Manufacturing Hub. Is part of that facility. And again, it's to provide advanced wet lab space for faculty, students and industry partners to collaborate on biotechnology, food, agriculture and health innovation. So again, driving the economy of our region and in the state more largely. A shout out to the executive director and her team that has that office, the tables here. I hate to clutter slides with tables, but I think it's really important to see the types of clients that they're serving, the work they're doing in the community and how important that is to our community, that we be that economic engine. So that wraps up my overview of fiscal twenty-five. And we're already making great strides in fiscal twenty-six to continue to succeed in these important areas to to support the southern region as well as the state of Illinois. Next slide is just if you have any questions you would like.
I have one question. As far as the first slide minority enrollment increases to thirty point nine percent. Where are most of those students? Where do most of those students reside and where are we recruiting them from?
A lot of our students are from the county or the Chicago land area. But we're also seeing an increase of students from Southern Illinois.
Regarding the R one designation and the opportunity numbers designation, really just a comment. I so appreciate the marketing that has gone on around that as well. We are one of twenty-one. And then also what you said about sometimes those can appear to be competing agendas. And yet SIU has not only found a way to integrate those together, but really celebrate those. And so I appreciate that work.
Morning. I'm excited to be with you this morning and share our performance update on IBHE from SIU School Medicine. Next slide please. We will focus on three aspects this morning in the presentation for sustainability. We'll talk about growth and sustainability in our practice, SIU Medicine. For the second initiative around growth, we'll talk about growth in our learners, specifically the Lincoln Scholars Program and really the economic impact that our learners have plus the state development. And third, progress around equity, we'll share some advancements and developments around the Community Health Worker Program that we have. Next slide. For sustainability, first and foremost, SIU Medicine for the clinical practice has shown significant growth from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-five. As you can see, our product has increased seventy percent. Clinical income increased almost sixty percent with a twenty percent increase in physician faculty and resident physicians. And most importantly though, our operating reserves stand at the sixtieth percentile for medical school practices. We're very proud of that and feel that that is a great marker of our financial stability moving forward. But this is only half of the story. As a community-based medicine, we rely not only on our SIU medicine practice, but the strong partnerships that we have with our hospital systems, with our insurers and with the government. And we tell you, can tell you today that those partnerships continue to grow and strengthen year by year. Next slide. Pay our attention to the goal of growth. SIU School Medicine has had significant growth in March from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-five as well. We've had significant growth in the number of physician assistant students, significant growth in graduate medical education programs or resident physicians and fellows, as well as growth in medical students. And growth specifically around level students has been Lincoln Scholar. And as you've heard about this novel program, this is a four-year track where students remain in Carbondale with the hope that they will have an increased interest in serving the rural communities of Southern Illinois moving forward as they grow into their practice. Next slide please. The economic impact of our learners is really important and this really drives this home. On average, each physician annually contributes to support of seventeen jobs, over three million in direct and indirect economic output, over one point four million in salaries and a hundred and twenty-six thousand tax revenues. Next goal please. But when we factor that in, on our average of eighty physicians who will graduate from our medical school and then go on to the practice world after they finish their residency and fellowship, they will annually contribute to thirteen hundred and sixty jobs, over two hundred and fifty million in direct and indirect economic amount, over a hundred and twelve million in salaries and ten million in tax revenues. And it is argued that a large number of those will stay in the state alone. And historically, since the inception of SIU School Medicine, that number resides around about one-third of our graduates. So it is a significant driver of economic impact plus the state of our. Next slide please. But let me turn our attention to echo. And this is a story that is easy for me to tell as an emergency physician at the Office of Community Health. Tomorrow, I'll be in the emergency department taking care of patients. And we can do an excellent job meeting their needs. But between us seeing them and then getting to their specialty care or their primary care appointment is a big gap. And this is where community health workers are truly a linchpin in what we're trying to do. Next slide please. So what do I need? It's the community health workers who help remove the barriers that our disadvantaged patients have to receive the care. Some of those barriers are around transportation. Some of those barriers are around access to care. Some of those barriers are around insurance, lack of insurance or lack of access to financial assistance. And finding all of this has translated into reduced need for other services in the community, such as involvement upon enforcement. We've seen great strides here and we really feel that the Community Health Worker Program has had a significant impact on our region and we've been growing that and we look to grow that moving forward. Next slide please. So in summary, we're very excited about the progress we've made across these three areas. If you'd like to get any questions that you have.
I will say that these two presentations have been marvelous and on what Dr. Hightower, he's not ready to say, we need to tell this story. Because the the impact that this university across the system has on the quality of life of the people in Illinois and even beyond is inevitable. And we appreciate the work that you folks do.
Thank you both for the glowing reports. We appreciate your work and dedication. Thank you.
I see what it was called, not his information. Sorry.
Thank you. I have a challenge of upholding a high standard. I appreciate that in part. And so over the, this is always a challenge to present, right? You see the size of the annual report. It's a retrospective for fiscal year. I'm always really excited to talk about where we are and where we're headed. And so now I have to pause and look back. But I hope maybe we'll see how the work over the past year informed the good news that the chancellor brought to this board at our last meeting and will continue to bring as we go forward. So that's one part. The other part is to just acknowledge that the work that goes into that annual performance report outcomes, the outcomes there are the result of the work, not just in academic affairs, but across the university. So I want to make sure that I acknowledge the work of the other people on chancellor's council, the other vice chancellors and the faculty and staff who make the work happen regardless of what division they're in. I have the pleasure of and honor of presenting it, but it is certainly not just the effort of academic affairs. So if we could move forward. So we're all picking these in slightly different order. So I'll start with equity. If you've read our strategic plan, you're familiar with our goals. I think you know that we are laser focused on student success and closing equity gaps. And part of what you see is the moves that we're making to try to hit that ambitious goal of ninety percent retention that we laid out in our strategic plan. You don't move that directly, you don't move there in one year, right? That is a large and ambitious goal. But continuing for that trend line to move in the right way, moving pieces, making significant changes all help propel us forward. So the things that have to be accomplished in FY twenty-five include moving to direct entry. So for those of you who are like, what's direct entry? So now rather than waiting till near the end of your sophomore year, the beginning of your junior year, maybe later, students can declare their majors from the very beginning. I think about how important that is. It's not just about, oh, I'm in this major. It is an opportunity to connect with their faculty from prior to day one, right? It's an opportunity to begin developing an identity as a scholar. And it also helps to dispel some mythology, right? So community mythology of, well, you can't get into nursing, nursing's full, they're at capacity. No, they're not, right? We have capacity, we welcome you and we want you to be a part of our nursing community. It's just one example, right? But we want to make those connections early. There's still space for students to explore them. Not everyone knows what all the possibilities are and they genuinely want to explore. We want to support them in that journey. So that's one piece, right? We've talked to this board a number of times about codes, our community oriented digital engagement scholars program. With the help of the Mellon Foundation, we've expanded that group from twenty-five students to one hundred students, right? Making the outstanding opportunities of that program available to more students. Similarly, with the funding from the John Martenson gift, that's now part of the John Martenson Honors Program. We've been able to expand the John Martenson Honors cohort. We know that both of those programs are really critical to reaching that goal of ninety percent, right? If you're going to reach ninety percent, you have to make sure that some goal groups are achieving over ninety percent so that you can hit that. So those are just examples of the expansion we've been doing. In addition, the Boundless Scholar Experience served two hundred and eighty-one first year students last year. And so when you think about our student body and the growth in underrepresented students and now that program in particular serves seventy-three percent Pell eligible students and the rate, the percentage of Pell eligible students in our first year class continues to rise, making sure that we have wraparound supports for students so that they can feel welcome, feel a sense of belonging and have the academic supports that they need to be successful, really critical. All of this though, then sort of has an opportunity to begin one step earlier with our Summer Success Program. So we have expanded our Summer Success Program. We started with twenty-five students, right? It's something that we're funding. And so we start somewhere, right? You're like, can we make it work? And we saw positive outcomes. As you can imagine, our chancellor's like, well, can we serve more? And fifty-six is not the number he gave us. We're working toward his goal. So next year, when I stand here, I'll give you a number that has a third digit in it.
They'll still say the same thing.
Airpoint, trust me, so. So but this program is really valuable to students. It allows them to get acquainted with our campus early, right before the semester begins, accomplish seven hours, seven student credit hours. And think about the ways in which they already feel like, oh, I know the resources, I've connected with faculty, I know how to get around campus. And so then they feel this jumpstart that allows them to be successful in that first semester. So all of this is part of the move toward closing equity gaps. Remember, we were able to show some really positive gains this fall in closing equity gaps and moving that retention number. So next slide please. So the second was sustainability. So many things to talk about, but as a relatively young campus in the grand scheme of things, right? Creating a culture of giving and an ethos of philanthropy is really a challenge for our campus. And and you can see that the work that has gone over, gone on over the last few years is starting to pay off yet again, right? You see growth in giving, in climate giving, as well as a higher goal for our day of giving and reaching that goal and exceeding that goal, but also seeing not just a rise in the number of the total amount, but in the percentage of people participating, right? And having a greater number of people who are identifying themselves as donors and supporters of the university only helps us as a community, right? All of this that allows us to invest in programs, whether it's codes or honors or scholarships or Boundless Scholars or Summer Success, all of those benefit in our scholarship programs all help students succeed. Additionally, you heard Dr. Broshaba and our colleagues talk about the OER program. And I just, this has really had the university's undergraduates mad. And I just want to emphasize the importance when students are making choices, right? And they're thinking about, okay, I need to pay this bill, I need to do this repair, right? They cover tuition and fees, they're still there, but they have expenses all along the way. What we don't want is for them to choose not to have a book, right? Or not have a course material. And they will make that choice, right? Because it's challenging. Our textbook rental program has always offset that. But you can't rent out a one-time digital access code. And so having our faculty deeply invested in OER is only beneficial to preserving the power of that textbook rental program. So I just wanted to reiterate, by that program is important to student success and the sustainability of our textbook rental program, which I think is is in line with all of our strategic goals as an institution. Next slide please. This last one is about growth. If you've heard the chancellor talk here in the community elsewhere, you'll hear him say, our goal is to be at the center of all things positive in our communities and that SIU is propelling the workforce in our region today and tomorrow. And so when you look at those strategies that IBHE has laid out, it's really about universities being powering the workforce, being drivers of economic development, being being committed to workforce development. And so when you think about SIU, remember we're expanding our footprint. I talked here, the chancellor's talked others about our work in Belleville at the Southwestern Illinois Center for Justice and Workforce Development. Talked about our work at the wedge and our role at the wedge. But all of that is trying to make sure that we're in the heart of the good things that are working to try to improve our communities. But in addition to that, it's also about thinking, thinking about how we reach other people in terms of the transformative opportunities of higher education. And I think so often we talk about first time, full-time students, we talk about graduate students and we don't talk about the hundreds of thousands of adults in this metropolitan statistical area, our metropolitan statistical area that has some college and no degree. And imagine the mobility that happens when they have the opportunity to complete that degree that they've started or if they're not ready for that, to get a credential, an alternative digital credential, whether it's credit based or non-credit based, so that they can excel in their workplace, right? That mobility is really important. And so we've focused on reaching that population and you can see that that effort is starting to pay off. So we were up twenty-nine percent in undergraduate online programs. That is particularly focused on online degree completion. And we reached sixteen hundred and fifty working adults as part of that effort in those programs or our graduate certificate programs. And we've issued eight hundred and eighty-two alternative digital credentials, right? So with partners like Thermo Fisher, Miller, or Cigna, Tyson. So that industry alignment is something that we've really focused on, making sure that we're helping get workers excel through the next level and meeting the needs of our industry partners. What I don't want to forget though, is that we still have a very traditional role to play. So we have a teacher shortage, right? We talk about a nursing shortage, we also have a teacher shortage. It is a goal in IBHE's Thriving Illinois Plan is that our public institutions helps help address that. And so we're doing that through a number of innovative ways. So we just have federally recognized apprenticeship programs. And we're working to sign more of those with partners throughout our region that will allow teacher candidates to be paid while they're in service and have the work with the payment offset for the employer. That will provide really valuable access for students and additional training for them as they're in that opportunity. We've expanded our master of arts in teaching and the pathways that that offers. And we have a future teacher conference, much like our sister institution. And in FY twenty-five, we hosted over three hundred high school students from twenty districts, right? Imagining themselves as teachers and thinking about teaching as a profession. And we do onsite admission that day, but think about how powerful that is to for them to have an opportunity to get to know a profession. Now, they won't all choose to be teachers, but having that moment to think about teaching as a profession and imagine what they can do and the difference they can make, I think is really part of our public service engagement and something we're really proud of. So I'll stop there. Happy to address any questions from the presentation or in the.
Thank you so much for your passion, your dedication. I see, I see your passion and I know it's it's paying off. Thank you for what you do.
Trustee Williams, can I say just a few things?
Yeah. Hello.
Oh, let Dr. Hightower go first.
Thank you, Provost Cobb and certainly Chancellor Minor. This is an outstanding report. I just want to touch on a couple of things if we could, if you'll, if you wouldn't mind discussing a little bit. I'm looking at your seventy-six percent retention across all students at SIU. This is simply amazing. Just a few years ago, this was certainly a concern on the campus level. And how you've addressed this is simply incredible and see this number is outstanding. The second thing, I'm looking at your two point nine million Chancellor Minor Day of Giving. Is this your largest amount? And I know you started this program when you came to SIU. So question one, is this your largest amount? And question two, roughly how much have you raised since you've been there, Chancellor Minor?
Well, trustee Hightower, thank you for the question. The provost started the presentation almost by lamenting the fact that we had to look backwards and we could not include the progress or success that we've had this year. So the two point nine million is for the prior year. We actually had another record year in the quad for our annual dedicated day of giving of three point two million dollars, which is to date our largest amount raised in a single day. So that has been extraordinary. And trustee Hightower, to your your first point about student retention, we have also experienced those numbers tick up for our domestic students returning to college this fall. And so we'll be really excited to share that in the next report. Also a record for some populations in terms of fall to fall retention.
Good. And a final comment. I want to just simply applaud you, Chancellor Minor, on the efforts that you continue to make and increase in SIU's footprint. And again, making it a holistic approach with faculty, staff and your entire team. So please know that your work is appreciated in this area as I talk to business leaders and talk to various people. So just wanted to just get that out there. So great job, great report.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to say, and thank you for the report. One of the nice things in this job is I get to kind of drop in to the universities and see a little spotlight of things that are happening that relate to things that were talked about. You know, the direct admissions, which you mentioned earlier this year during Welcome Week, I spent some time at Edgewoodville and I went to the School of Business and how they were able to kind of connect the students to each other in those majors. But also the faculty participation was outstanding. I thought it was great. And funny, I went up and told them how great I thought it was and they're like, yeah, we can do better. Which is really a great thing to see that kind of, we want to keep building on this and improving, but creating that sense of belonging for students from the beginning, we know has an impact on on retention. Couple of years ago, I was here at Carbondale and riding around with Jeff Bergen and Paul Frazier and was just so impressed by the number of students that they knew. Were reaching out to them about issues they had. I remember one, it was like, have you figured out that financial aid issue? Have not come to see me tomorrow? Like that direct involvement of our staff. And those are just two people who do this on this campus on a regular basis. And then I just recently was with Chancellor Lane when we went with medical school students in Springfield and then talking about how much they chose our school of medicine because they're aligned with their values, their goals and how everything that happened to them since they made that decision had reinforced that was the right decision for them. And that again, very much felt like they belong there and this was the right place for them. So all of the things we heard today, it's like, I get to see that in little snippets throughout the year. And it's always reaffirming to everything that we're doing here. So thank you to all of you.
Hey, Wade. That's the way it's coming.
Yes.
So sitting here listening to all three of these reports from the two provosts and our associate vice dean at the medical school, I just want to make a comment on the medical school. Just I've had a thought roll seat for that for the last fifty years. Dr. McDowell presented data on growth from twenty nineteen forward. Why did you pick twenty nineteen if this is the year before the pandemic? I don't think people realize that this medical school went during a pandemic. I'll just give you one snapshot, it started March of twenty twenty. When the, in that first year with no vaccines available, at one, their primary teaching hospital in Springfield had eleven hundred and fifty deaths from COVID in one year that they were managing and taking care of. Did you heard what he said? They've had seventy percent growth in clinical production since the pre-pandemic year to now. And I'm on access to care. This medical school serves sixty-six counties of central and southern Illinois. Think about that Lincoln Scholar Program that started. That's thirty-two medical students who are down here all four years. And their scores are identical to the scores of the other seventy-two, their starting their students. And I know it's paying big dividends. They said they had a twenty percent increase in faculty and a twenty percent increase in residents. I mean, a lot of people always say, oh, it's hard to get people to move to Illinois. And it's not hard. You get high caliber faculty to come to SIU and practice medicine. So I'm just in awe of what they're doing in growth, sustainability. The last thing Dr. McDowell said relative to the community workers program, was talking about his experience standing in a tertiary emergency room working tomorrow. He can do an extraordinary job with his colleagues. If you don't have access to post op pharmacy, and you don't have access to getting into a primary care doctor, you don't have access to seeing a specialist. And regardless of the ability to pay, the medical school steps up, they take everyone. They're doing an extraordinary job. So I just can't. Man, Dr. Cruz, all the faculty ever been in the university medical school. We have a national treasure at SIU School of Medicine, and it's only continued to grow over the last 55 years. But this post pandemic work is really extraordinary. Great work.
Thank you for your acknowledgement. Thank you.
I would just like to add, these have been three outstanding presentations. And when you couple that with what we heard yesterday with the collaboration with Simmons Law School, and even for those of us that toured to WSIU yesterday, this university system is moving forward and upwards in all categories. And I would match our system against any system in the country. And it's because of people like you, that everybody at this university on all the campuses, the faculty and the staff are doing just an outstanding job. Their dedication cannot be more appreciated.
Yeah, I just want to echo the sentiments too. I think all three of the presentations were fantastic. And I know because of time constraints, you had to get a lot of information into a little amount of time. But just thank you too for the performance report, the written reports that were given and in the materials, because it's clear the work in detail that went into that preparation, and it's very appreciated.
Yes, thank you all.
I also want to thank everyone for their reports. But Provost Cobb, I particularly want to mention the appreciation of the focus on the traditional mission of the university as well as that some college no degree population. I was one of those students for many years before I came back as a returning adult learner. So I appreciate that work. Question about the alternative digital credentials that you mentioned. Are those for credit or non credit? And did you see any trends in, were there some high demand credentials or did they vary across industry?
So they'd be varied, although I think we're starting to see some commonality. So the ones that are with Thermo Fisher and Millipor Sigma, right, our industry partners, say these are the kinds of skills we're looking for. And so because we have the National Core Ethanol Research Center, we have a biotechnology laboratory space, we're able to then teach, you know, students or members of our community how to use that. We are also able to work with the county, local county employment offices to leverage we owe in dollars. And so those are non credit, but they're also available to our students. And so they can enroll in them as well. And so it can be a value add for them. And that's the laboratory technician program. So they learn how to set up a machine, a particular set of equipment. They know how to clean it. They know how to service it, right? And then they're ready to immediately start work. We also did one with Tyson, where Tyson was looking for some of the workers in their plant to be able to have additional math skills so that they could move into management or at least have an option of moving into management. So we offered outdoor classes at the plant for a group of students. Really wonderful participation from our corporate partner in celebrating the accomplishments of the students so that then they build confidence to move to the next thing. So a lot of those are non credit right now. We're trying to do more credit alignment. But I will say for a chemistry student who then graduates and also has that alternative digital credential that they can put in their LinkedIn profile, right? And employer can click on it and see, oh, they have these skills and these competencies. It sets them apart, right? So that they see, oh, not only do they have the degree, but they have a tangible set of skills and a readiness to be employed that this other candidate might not.
Yeah. Thank you. Committee item four proposes, in addition to Board of Trustees' policy, I will ask Brenda Martin to please present this item.
So as a recipient, federal funding, SIU must comply with the section 889 of the National Defense Authorization Act. And so what this section does is requires that you have to have a certification that we are not using certain equipment. And so it's telecommunication and video surveillance equipment from certain foreign entities. And so these are things like cell phones, tablets, routers, things like that. And so the government keeps a list of foreign entities that we do not purchase or use these from. And so this policy is in place to make sure that each campus has policies in place to meet this requirement. And so it detailed out things for each campus, the parties there, and then also our export control office at the system level. And so all of these together, I mean, for that the campus is compliant so that we can keep our federal funding, which is good. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Is there a motion to approve committee item four?
Show blue.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, please perform the roll call vote.
High Tower.
Yes.
Abizina.
Yes.
Arnett. Salver.
Yes.
Simmons.
Yes.
The motion passes. Committee item five through nine proposes distinguished service awards and honorary degrees at the Carbondale campus. Chancellor Lane, will you please present these items?
Yeah, thank you, Trustee Williams. I'd be remiss if I didn't echo what the board just gave and congratulatory remarks. Three great presentations. It's evidence that teamwork definitely makes the dream work. So it's great information all around. I present to you some very important individuals today for your approval or consideration and approval. I think you're going to be really excited to hear about their backgrounds. I'll start with James J. Miller for the honorary degree of Doctor of Science. James Miller, an internationally recognized leader in aviation, aerospace, and navigation policy, has devoted his career to advancing the systems that guide, connect, and protect people around the world. A three-time degree holder of Southern Illinois University Carbondale, Mr. Miller has exemplified the values of innovation, collaboration, and public service that define the SIU mission. Over more than three decades in government, industry, and academia, Mr. Miller has played a central role in developing and strengthening the global positioning system for civil, commercial, and space applications. He currently serves as the Executive Director of the National Space Base Positioning, Navigation, and Timing Advisory Board appointed by the NASA Administrator. Beyond his professional achievements, he has remained deeply connected to SIU, facilitating the sponsorship of the previous NASA Wings program to introduce underrepresented students to aviation and aerospace careers. Through his leadership, mentorship, and lifelong commitment to service, James J. Miller exemplifies the high ideals of Southern Illinois University Carbondale and the enduring impact of its graduates on the world stage. If you don't mind, Trustee Williams, I'll keep reading.
Next, please.
Okay. Our next person we bring to you is for the honorary degree Doctor of Humane Letters. Michael Mike Glenn, a distinguished alumnus of Southern Illinois University Carbondale, has devoted his life to excellent education and service. As a scholar athlete, he was twice state academic All-American and earned the title of Missouri Valley Conference Player of the Year in 1976 before embarking on a 10-year career in the National Basketball Association. Known to fans as the Stinger, Glenn became one of SIU's most celebrated players and later a respected broadcaster, educator, and humanitarian. In 1990, while playing basketball in the NBA, Glenn founded the nation's first and only free basketball camp for deaf and hard appearing athletes, a program that continues more than 40 years. Beyond his athletic legacy, Glenn is an accomplished author, historian, and curator whose exhibitions and lectures illuminate the contributions of African Americans to sports, civil rights, and culture. He has written five books and curated national exhibits that lend history, education, and empower. His many honors, including induction into the Missouri Valley Conference in Georgia Sports Hall of Fame and receipt of the NBA's Jay Walker Kennedy Citizenship Award, reflect his lifelong commitment to service above cell. Through his passion, leadership, and educational outreach, Mr. Glenn has elevated communities, inspired generations, and exemplified the highest ideals of Southern Illinois University Carbondale. Our next person, this is near and dear to my heart, Chancellor Minor and also Dr. Mahoney. We spent a considerable amount of time with this individual. Dr. Cheryl Green, this is for our distinguished service award. Dr. Green, a proud alumna of Southern Illinois University Carbondale, devoted her more than 30-year career in higher education to advancing access, equity, and student success. As a transformational leader and tireless advocate, she embodied the ideals of servant leadership, dedicating her life to empowering others through education. At the time of her passing in 2025, Dr. Green was serving as the sixth president of Governor State University. Her visionary leadership left an enduring mark on the institution and the communities it serves. Dr. Green's career journey reflected both depth and breadth of impact. After earning her master's and doctoral degrees in counseling psychology from SIU, she brought on to hold key leadership roles at the University of Michigan, Chicago State University, Tennessee State University, and the University of Wisconsin System, where she served as interim chancellor of UW's Whitewater. Dr. Green's legacy extends far beyond titles or institutions. It lives on in the lives she touched, the communities she strengthened. I proudly honor her apostomously for a lifetime defined by service, compassion, and the transformative power of education. I hope today her staff are tuned in. We did send them a note and hopefully they're listening. And we really appreciate Dr. Green and us being able to honor her. Our last, which I think is very fitting, and I hope he doesn't get too choked up on this, but this is to honor our chairman, J. Phil Gilbert. J. was devoted his life to the pursuit of justice, exemplifying integrity, fairness, and an unwavering commitment to public service. His distinguished career as a private practitioner, state and federal judge, and higher education leader embodies the mission and values of the Southern Illinois University Simmons Law School. Pointed to the United States District Court for the Southern District of Illinois by President George H. W. Bush in 1992. Judge Gilbert served with distinction as chief judge from 1993 to 2000 and continues his service as a senior United States District Judge. For joining the federal bench, Judge Gilbert served as a circuit judge in Illinois's first judicial circuit and as chairman of the Illinois State Board Elections, where his leadership strengthened transparency, accountability, and trust in government. A lifelong resident, Carbondale, Judge Gilbert has furthered his commitment to higher education through his service on the SIU Board of Prestige since 2015, including seven consecutive terms as chairman. His leadership has guided the university system with integrity, vision, and devotion to its public mission. Through his exceptional judicial record, his steadfast support of legal education, and his lifetime of ethical and community-centered leadership, Judge J. Phil Gilbert represents the very essence of distinguished service the SIU Simmons Law School seeks to honor with the referral for the honorary Doctor of Law. Trustee Williams, I bring each of those individuals to the board for your consideration and.
Chancellor Lane? What about wordage in item all?
Put Judge Gilbert in front of somebody? Can I have a little bit of order?
Barry Spector, I'm not sure I'm pronouncing. Distinguished service.
Here we go. Okay. This is for our distinguished service award, Dr. Kathleen Perikak Spector at the SIU Carbondale commencement. All of these are for commencement in 2026. Dr. Spector, retired professor of mathematics at Southern Illinois University Carbondale, demonstrated extraordinary dedication to education, outreach, and her distinguished career and into retirement. Over nearly four decades at SIU, she advanced mathematics education through inspired teaching, leadership, and sustained community engagement that continues to enrich both the university and the broader Southern Illinois region. A respected scholar and educator, Dr. Spector served as vice chair of the Department of Mathematics and twice earned the College of Science Teacher of the Year Award along with SIU's Outstanding Teacher Award and the Lindell Sturgis Award for Professional Achievement. Equally remarkable is her continued volunteerism following her retirement in 2017. From her home in Michigan, she has returned repeatedly entirely at her own expense to support key SIU regional outreach activities such as the Southern Illinois Regional Science Fair, Math Field Day, Expanding Your Horizons, and the Science in the South Conference. Dr. Spector's enduring commitment exemplifies a spirit of distinguished service, selfless, sustained, and profoundly impactful. Her lifelong devotion to SIU and Southern Illinois continues to inspire students, colleagues, and educators statewide. Got a little ahead of myself. I apologize. Thank you, Paula. To these individuals, very deserving. They have been vetted through our council or committee that reviews on a wide scale all of their accomplishments. And we submit them for your, again, consideration and approval.
Thank you. Dr. High Tower, do you have words?
Yes, thank you, Chair. These are just outstanding honorees. And I want to just commend Chancellor Lane, President Mahoney, Chancellor Minor for you all's outstanding work in selecting these individuals. But I do want to just speak on the one nominee, that's our chair. Again, we could not be recognizing a more deserving individual for the commitment and dedication to not only the SC campus across the SIU system, for the commitment, dedication that our chairman Gilbert displays and demonstrates on a daily basis. The devotion, Phil, that you display is just absolutely outstanding. And we want you to know that we appreciate you, we respect you, and we support you. And we want you to know that this is just a recognition of your outstanding work and contributions to this area. John, I know that you would probably want to make a couple of comments if you would, please.
Sure. Judge, I heard you talking one time about missing the window of application to SIU School of Law because you wanted to get started and you went to Loyola, right? And that was because SIU was starting law school the next fall and he didn't want to wait. So and then he didn't transfer. So Judge Gilbert has educated how many children there? How many degrees have you supported and been behind?
My grandparents, my parents, my sisters, my wife, my children, and nieces and nephews have already graduated from SIU. I do not have a degree from SIU. So I was the black sheep in the family.
So when we heard that recently, I told Ed, I was like, we got to fix this. So we nominated him, Dr. Lane. Thank you for running through the process and the course of action. And so in May, depending on how things go between now and May, you'll be making his degree.
I can always flunk it.
Thank you, Ed. Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you, Chancellor Lane, and congratulations to all the, everyone who was recognized. Judge Gilbert, thank you for your guidance and your leadership. And Dr. Lane said it very well. You're the essence of integrity and. and I appreciate coming, becoming a member of this board under your leadership. You've held my hand, and I appreciate your passion and compassion for people. Thank you for all you do, and I'm so happy. You're so lucky now. Almost, 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 yes, thank you. Committee items five through nine propose. Is there a motion? Is there a motion to approve committee items five through nine?
So moved.
Second.
Madam Secretary, please perform the roll call vote.
Hightower?
Yes.
Epstein?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes.
Sauger?
Yes.
Simmons?
And I'm not allowed to vote?
It was.
The most, yes.
Dr. Hightower, I vote.
No. I'll answer for him. He's probably on meeting, but I'm sure he said it.
Repeat that again, Chairman.
He has to be a vote. I told him no.
Well, we, you know, John, we had that discussion with him earlier. We told him no, but he still wants to try and push through it.
I know. He's scared of public pressure on this.
The motion passes. If there is no other business before the Academic Matters Committee, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Trustee Williams. The next committee meeting is audit committee meeting. Trustee Curtis from Flint, proceed.
Meeting of the audit committee is now in session. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Meeting held December 5, 2024. There are motions to approve seven minutes.
So moved.
Second. About a second.
Second.
Madam Secretary, please perform the roll call vote.
I can't second, I'm sorry.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please.
Curtis?
Yes.
Epstein?
Yes.
Sauger?
Yes.
The motion passed. Committee items two and three are prepared reports. The first is on the FY 24 SIU System Audit, and the second is the FY 25 Annual Report of Activity, the Office of Internal Audit Compliance and Ethics Director Thompson is here today. Will you please present your reports?
Good morning. It's my pleasure to present to you today. The first agenda item I'll talk through is the high-level overview of the results from the fiscal year twenty-four state compliance audit report. Immediately following, I will present the fiscal year twenty-five internal audit annual report. Both items were provided to the President and the Audit Committee respectively in August and September. Related to the first agenda item, the first fiscal year twenty-four state compliance audit was conducted by Plant Moran, a special assistant auditor to the Illinois Office of the Auditor General, and this was published and released in August. The report did not contain scope limitations, but did contain a material, a modified opinion on compliance and identified weakness over internal control over compliance. The report contained fourteen audit findings with one deemed as material non-compliance, which influenced the modified audit opinion. We also received a letter of immaterial findings which contained four lesser significant matters. Links to these reports were shared with the members of the Audit Committee. And at the time of their release, these reports were also filed with the U.S. Department of Education and the Federal Audit Clearing House. While campus staff were successful in implementing corrective actions or supplier year findings, there continue to be ten repeat findings among the fourteen current year findings. However, great progress was made on the oldest repeat finding that have persisted since 2005, which related to the finding failure to require faculty timesheets. This finding was actually implemented in the prior fiscal year, but it was deemed successfully implemented and closed in the fiscal year twenty-four review. Rather than providing a deep dive discussion at this time regarding the audit findings within the state compliance report, please feel free to reach out to me at any time with specific questions that you might have. Recently, we were requested by the Legislative Audit Commission to provide an update on the status of the fiscal year state compliance findings. This update was provided to the commission by the required date, which was actually earlier this week, and I'm happy to share the update with the board as well. This now concludes my overview of the fiscal year state compliance report for twenty-four. Now I will present the internal audit and report, which is my slide presentation on the screen. This report actually highlights activities from last fiscal year, which occurred prior to my current tenure. So the annual internal audit report, next slide, please, and next one. The annual internal audit report is required by the Control and Internal Auditing Act, and it summarizes how the Office of Internal Audit, Compliance, and Ethics utilizes its resources as well as the status of the internal audit plan and actions that are being taken by compliance and ethics. During fiscal year twenty-five, no impairments to objectivity or independence existed for any of the fiscal year twenty-five engagements. There were no non-audits assigned to internal audit, as well as there were no projects performed that were out of alignment to the Global Institute of Internal Audit Standards. Next slide. Next one. An annual internal quality assurance review is required by the Global Internal Audit Standards, and this relates to ongoing monitoring and an annual self-assessment that we do internally. Our last self-assessment was occurred in March of 2025. No impairments were found from this internal review. Correspondingly, an external quality assurance review is also required every five years by Global Internal Audit Standards. Our last review occurred in May of 2021, where we were rated an assess that generally conforms to the standards. Our next external quality assurance review is due by May 2026, of which we already have an external assessment team identified and in place, which has been approved already by the Illinois State Internal Audit Advisory Board. This team will begin their assessment process of department in early 2026 in order to meet the May 2026 deadline. Next slide. Next one. For most of fiscal year twenty-five, operated at a nearly full staffing level, currently there is a need to fill a vacancy for an IT auditor. One point that has been made in the past that I believe is still worth mentioning is the ongoing challenge to recruit qualified staff, particularly IT staff, due to the competitiveness and the market related to salaries and benefits. From a department structure standpoint, our report functionally to the board via the Audit Committee and administratively to the President. This positioning provides us the organizational authority and status to carry out our duties without interference and also supports the legal requirements for independence and objectivity. Compliance and ethics reports functionally to the President and administratively to internal audit. Next slide. Next one. Historically, the department has executed on a two-year rolling audit plan. For fiscal year twenty-five to fiscal year twenty-six, there are initially thirty-six audits identified. Based on my review and present tenure, suggestions for adjustment will be submitted for consideration and approval by the President and the Audit Committee in the future. During fiscal year twenty-five, fiscal year twenty-five, seven planned audit reports were issued. Two special reviews issued along with one advisory service. Eleven reviews were closed, which relates to all open observations per a specific audit being implemented and closed. Next slide. During fiscal year twenty-five, we issued twenty-five new recommendations for improvement to management across the university and successfully closed eight. There was a nineteen-point-five closure rate. This was a drastic decrease from the prior fiscal year. This decreased ability to close observations relate to the challenges of significant staff turnover in departments, which allowed basically hindered the ability to follow up due to the constant staff turnover in some areas. Next slide. And finally, compliance and ethics serves as the key liaison of the executive inspector general. They oversee the annual training required by the state officials and employees Ethics Act, and they also prepare the annual year training, year-end training reports for the OEIG and Executive Ethics Commission. Next slide. The review of nine hundred and fifteen statements of economic interest was carried out by the ethics officer regarding her mandated duties. She investigated twenty-two OEIG complaints and fulfilled four case document requests from the OEIG. Slide. The outcome and the content outcome of our reviews and investigations are considered confidential, and they cannot be discussed in a public, public meeting. But I'm happy to speak individually if you want to reach out and speak directly regarding any of the observations, findings, or audits that we conducted. This now concludes my summary for the fiscal year twenty-five and report of the Office of Internal Audit.
Thank you, Director Thompson. It's a privilege for me to know you and begin our working relationship with the board and for those in attendance. Yvonne joined us at the beginning of this fiscal year in July, so she's finished her first six months, and we're very happy to have you.
It's good to be here.
If there are no other business before the Audit Committee, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Trustee Curtis. The next meeting will be the Finance Committee meeting. Trustee Curtis, will you please proceed with the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee is now in session. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting held September 18, 2025?
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
Madam Secretary, please perform the roll call.
Curtis?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
The minutes are approved. Committee item number two proposes the approval of purchase of coal hauling, ash disposal, ash hauling of SIUC by Chancellor Simmers. Will you introduce this item?
Yes, thank you. This matter seeks to approve the purchase of coal hauling, ash disposal, and ash hauling services for the SIUC power plant facility on the Carbondale campus. The selected vendor is Nighthawk Coal LLC of Percy, Illinois. They will provide a five-year contract for a total of sixteen million, and this will provide the university with the opportunity to establish consistent pricing on this commodity. And this is a daily use commodity, of course, at SIUC's power plant. This is the lowest bidder in the bidding process. The chancellor and I, the vice chancellor for administration findings, have recommended this matter to the President. Thank you.
Is there any discussion by the committee members? Is there a motion, Finance Committee, to approve item number two?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, please perform the roll call.
Curtis?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
The item is approved by committee. Committee item number three proposes the approval to acquire real estate for the SIU School of Medicine in Springfield. Dean and Provost, Dr. Cruz, is not here today, and John, I believe you're going to present that item.
Morning. This is Board Agenda Item Q. This matter seeks approval to acquire two real estate properties, both located in Springfield. The university plans to demolish the existing structures for the future development of the School of Medicine. Three oh nine West Reynolds has a purchase price of forty-three thousand dollars, and it's located immediately adjacent to Simmons Cancer Institute in the employee parking lot. Ten forty-three North Franklin is a purchase price of eighty thousand dollars. This property is directly behind an existing university building that houses the School of Medicine's management operations. These prices are consistent with recent property sales in the area and will be funded with non-appropriate funds. The total purchase price is two one hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars plus associated closing and demolition cost of approximately seventy-six thousand eight hundred dollars. We seek your approval.
Is there any discussion? Is there a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please perform the roll call vote.
Curtis?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
This item is approved by committee. Committee item four proposes to revise the work contract with RisePoint at SIUE Provost Cobb. Will you introduce this item?
Absolutely. Good morning. This matter seeks approval to revise the reward award amount for the current online program management agreement with RisePoint LLC, formerly Academic Partnerships. For targeted marketing and outreach for online programs, RisePoint provides recruiting and technical support for these online programs. SIUE maintains complete authority and academic autonomy over these programs versus instruction and curriculum. The partnership first approved in 2018, was expanded in 2023, that has proven exceptionally successful in growing enrollment for the School of Business and the School of Education, Health, and Human Behavior, far exceeding original projections. On December seventh, 2023, this board approved a contract with RisePoint for a five-year term ending July, June 30, 2029, in the amount of five-point-five million dollars. Due to the success of the relationship with RisePoint, the current contract amount is projected to be fully expanded by mid-2026, mid-spring 2026 spread. This matter seeks approval to increase the contract award amount. The funding terms would remain unchanged. This is a revenue share agreement funded entirely by the tuition fees derived from the students recruited by RisePoint. This revenue was new to SIUE because of the partnership. The contract with RisePoint is eligible for exemption under the procurement code as a revenue generating contract. SIUE is exploiting the opportunity to expand our offerings through RisePoint. This matter also seeks approval to delegate to the President authorization to approve the addition of new high-demand online programs to the contract under the same terms as previously approved by the board. This contract allows SIUE to remain competitive and responsive to market needs in the fast-moving online education market. The Chancellor and I recommend this matter, recommended this matter to the President.
Is there any discussion?
I congratulate you, Provost Cobb, on this extraordinary growth in these online programs. It's exciting.
Thank you.
Is there a motion for the Finance Committee to approve?
Second.
Madam Secretary, please perform the roll call.
Curtis?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
This item is approved by committee. Committee item number five proposes approval to select general contractor services. SIUE Vice Chancellor, Hallie, will you present this item?
Trustee Curtis, I want to present the item on behalf of the Vice Chancellor. This matter seeks approval to establish open service contracts through the formal bid process to retain the services of general contractors for various repairs and renovation projects at SIUE. The individual contracts will be awarded to the four lowest bidders renewable on a one-year basis for up to five years. The vendors may provide total services up to five hundred thousand dollars, but individual projects within the open services contract will not exceed a smaller formal bid amount of one hundred thousand dollars. For each project, the campus architect or a campus authorized architect will develop a scope of work. SIUE will solicit quotes from the four vendors and issue a fixed-priced order. The availability of these contracts enables SIUE to work more efficiently and more cost-effectively to implement the projects across our campus. On behalf of the university, I seek approval for this item.
Thank you, Chancellor Minor. Is there any discussion? Is there a motion by the Finance Committee to approve this item?
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
Madam Secretary, please perform the roll call vote.
Curtis?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes.
Connolly?
Six is the annual debt compliance report that was shared with the board as information by Vice President Oates. If there are no other businesses before the Finance Committee, the meeting stands adjourned.
Thank you, Trustee Curtis. The next meeting is the Architectural Design Committee meeting. Trustee Simmons?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
The meeting in Architectural Design Committee is now in session. First item on the agenda is the minutes we had on September 18 meeting, so if I could be in a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Moving to the seconded. Madam Secretary, you perform the roll call.
Simmons?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Thank you. This motion passes. Committee item two is the project approval for the remodeling and naming of Jim Hayes State. naming of Jim Hayes Stadium. Director Leonard, will you please present this item? I know you weren't, you were kind of called in last minute on this, I think, maybe.
No, 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 I'm just, you know, I probably looked really bad because I'm really tired. I was just, I'm amped up, didn't get much sleep last night.
I won last night.
Huge win in dramatic, right? I mean, that was unbelievable. I'm surprised I have voices. Fortunately, we got a gift from Jamie and Meta Hayes for one million dollars. And with that gift, they would like to remodel our stadium club. That's where they spend a lot during the fall season and so they were very excited to make this gift to us. So what we're here today is asking for your approval. Let me have the information in your packets, the project that essentially is to take a remodel of an existing space. And the recognition that President Rossing would like to name that facility the honor of Jamie's dad and the Jim Hayes Stadium club. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I do have a comment and that is, as I understand it, it's about a million dollar renovation project.
Yes, it's about almost ninety thousand dollars today.
And you have two fifty in hand with seeking over the next three years, I think, to get budgets for that, right? Something like that.
Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for years and then if we need to, what we do is a bridge with the foundation. They can fund that until those gifts come in. However, we have spoken with the donor and there's a good probability that they'll just pay it off this.
I just clear that we weren't in conjecture with the Finance Committee on and so didn't want to fall back on our lap. So thank you for that. Are there any questions on this project? All right, hearing that, if I could have a motion to approve Committee item two.
So moved.
Move in second, Madam Secretary.
Simmons?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Director Leonard.
All right. Thanks so much.
All right. Committee item three is the award of contract for the Simmons Camp. Will we present this item?
Yeah, this matter seeks the award of contract for interior renovations of Shell infusion treatment center to allow us, the School of Medicine, to expand chemotherapy and other infusion services to patients. The board approved the budget. Project's open in December twenty-four meeting. We subbid to this project and for the bids for favorable were favorable in the subject of the work contract. C A D construction of treatment in Illinois for nine hundred seventeen thousand six hundred dollars. Engineering fees. Burning, burning, estimated two hundred and fifty thousand will be purchased pursuant to existing I pick contracts. Funding will come from existing School of Medicine. If there are funds, we seek your approval for this matter.
Thank you. Is there any motion on this item?
So moved.
Move in second?
Second.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. You perform the call.
Simmons?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes.
Con Connolly?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Committee item four is the award of contract for considering unit replacements at SIUE Chancellor. Sir Mayor.
Thank you, Trustee Simmons.
The replacement.
Yes.
This matter seeks board approval to issue a contract for the removal and replacement of the Bluff Hall air handling units. Overall, the project for replacement of these air handling units across all residence halls was approved by the board back in December of two thousand and twenty-three. Phase one of the overall project was completed in the summer of two thousand and twenty-four. The cost of this phase is approximately one point three million dollars, which will be funded by the replacement reserves. The work will be completed during the summer months to lessen the inconvenience to students and to ensure that the residential units are ready for the next academic year. On behalf of the university, yes, seek approval for this item.
Thank you, Dr. Park. Is there a motion to approve this Committee item four?
So moved.
Move to the second?
Second.
Thank you, Madam Secretary.
Simmons?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. There's no other business before the A and D Committee. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, Trustee Simmons. We will take a ten to fifteen minute recess before the full board meeting.
President.
President.
Curtis.
Present.
Gilbert.
Present.
Hightower.
Present.
Salver.
Present.
Simmons.
Present.
Williams.
Present.
The quorum is established. The next item of business is approval of minutes of the meeting of Lawrence Hill, September seventeenth and eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Is there a motion to approve these minutes? So Luke.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. And Mrs. Keith, will you please call the robe?
Abizina.
Yes.
Barnett.
Yes.
Connelly.
Yes.
Curtis.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Hightower.
Yes.
Selver.
Yes.
Simmons.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
If the minutes are approved, are there any trustee reports? I don't think there are. And the next is for the committee reports. And I'll report that the executive committee has not met in between board meetings. At regular board meetings, three minutes will be reserved to receive comments or questions from members of the public and employees of the university. Speakers' comments or questions should not exceed five minutes. Persons wishing to speak shall contact the executive secretary of the board. The executive secretary of the board shall maintain a roster of those seeking to speak, and she'll call the speakers in order. And in secretary, do we have any speakers?
No speakers today.
Our next item of business is the executive officers' report. Chancellor Lane, will you present this report to the Carbondale campus?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chairman Gilbert. As a PowerPoint is coming forward, it's hard to believe that it's already December and we're about a week away from commencement. You know, we always like to say the sun is always shining in Southern Illinois, so you get a nice look before the snow. Actually, some of those trees haven't turned down. So we are excited. We've got a lot of good information, but very brief presentation today. So if we go to the next slide, I want to talk with you a little bit about enrollment. And I mentioned earlier how teamwork makes the dream work. Our folks have been working together in a number of different areas to make sure that we don't forget about the spring. Sometimes we move to fall a little too fast and we forget about the spring and the summer. And so as you can see, a lot of our efforts to recruit students, whether they're transfer students or newly admitted students, those numbers are looking really good out of the gate on all levels. And so our team continues to be laser focused on making sure that happens. We've had some really successful SIU days here where we've invited several of our folks, not only in this region, across the state, across the country, that have been on our campus. And we've welcomed those individuals and talked about the experience and what they could imagine when they get here to Southern Illinois University Carbondale. So really excited about that. Fall typically is reserved, though, for recruiting. And obviously, spring is for yielding. And now I'm talking about fall of two thousand and twenty-six students who'll be coming in. So we spent a lot of our efforts in the fall trying to make sure that students say yes with our Say Yes campaign, with our partnerships here in the region, with our superintendents and our principals. But we really are focused on making sure the applications are there and that we yield those applications in the spring and turn them into registrations before they arrive in the fall. So excited about that. So next slide gives you an idea about some of these activities. And Dr. Mahoney actually mentioned one of our events yesterday during the executive meeting and how we paired our game against Purdue, our football game against Purdue, with one of our Saluki Takeover tours in Indianapolis. And so I just want to give you a little flavor from some of these tours.
Being able to reconnect and get highlights of what's going on on campus with the research and everything that's going on. It was, it was a great event. We really enjoyed it. Hey, Salukis, welcome to DC.
The stories tonight were incredible. I was so taken with everybody's story. And I got to tell you, I didn't really realize how many SIU alumni were out here in Washington, DC. And I think that's what I was most excited about. It was to see all of these new faces and names and make connections. And that, to me, is what it's all about, to be an alumni and pay it forward.
You know, we've got this crazy event happening in Chicago, and it's called Saluki Takeover. And I would guarantee you, it's going to be about three hundred people here, and they're going to go wild and crazy because we are great dogs here, and we're going to do some good things here, and it's for a good cause.
So I'd love to come out to the SIU Takeovers because it's a great opportunity to mingle with current Salukis, old Salukis. And so it's such a great thing to be able to stay connected.
Lise, from Austin, Texas, we're bringing you a little piece and slice of Carbondale. Welcome to Austin.
I think it's exceptional that we have our chef to come all the way out to Dallas to connect with people on a more personal level.
It's people from all over the place that are coming here. So it's really great to see people from Texas coming to Austin just for this event.
Going as how you made me who I am today. So I just was happy to see everybody with the maroon.
To get this one opportunity every year to see this maroon, it really reminds me of running through the tunnel and hearing, "Welcome, the Salukis." It just kind of brings everything home and reminds me of my past and amazing time that I had at Southern Illinois.
It was great seeing everybody that I have known through the years, either at SIU or here in Dallas. So it's always fun to get together with a bunch of Salukis.
All right. Well, as you can see, Saluki Nation is alive and well. And I want to highlight, actually, the event that you're looking at is the Saluki Takeover in Houston. And while we were there, we were blessed with a very generous gift from one of our Saluki alums out of Chicago. And we were going to call this the Harb. This is going to be in Dean Morris's area. Thank you for the next slide. Very passionate, and you can see there, a $2.1 million gift is what we announced at that particular event. This is a game changer, will be a game changer for our students. Harvey and you see Colleen Michaels there, just great individuals. They live in Houston, and so having that connection to the state of Texas is important. He also connected us with Yes Prep, which is a very large, essentially charter school district down there that he wants to be able to funnel students from that district here to Southern Illinois University Carbondale. As you know, there are a lot of students that are looking to actually leave the state of Texas and come to places like ours where they can imagine a number of different things here that in some cases they can't do in their own home state. So we are targeting Texas big time. So really happy to have some donors. As you know, the Gower Translational Center of Gowers are down in Houston as well. So Texas is definitely a friend to us in the recruiting market. Our next slide focuses on some of the other takeover events that we still have. And I have to thank the SIU Foundation and Matt Kupchak and his staff. They are the primary reason why we're able to take these tours and take the show on the road, if you will. You can see the dates that are upcoming. We expect large crowds. We've already had record number crowds for the first few Saluki Takeovers. Our alums, our donors, our superintendents, principals, different community college leaders, there are a number of folks that join us. You heard the Provost mention earlier, the deans are involved as well, and they are there at these events and working with those folks that I just mentioned. Southern Illinois Takeover Tour is, if you can pencil that in, that's a little longer than most, if you can look up there. Our job is really to try and cover the seventeen counties in Southern Illinois. And so we do a lot of, a lot of work out there to make sure we reach those students in those areas. So the return on investment, we're seeing that return, whether it's in donor contributions, whether it's in enrollment. These have proven to be very successful and really something we want to continue to go forward with. Next slide. Talk a little bit and brag a little bit about the SIU Foundation. And they see themselves as a very big accelerator to the institution. And I'll have to tell you, in my almost six years of being here, I can't think of another place I've ever been where I've been so supported by a foundation that helps us achieve our goals in enrollment and a number of other areas. I want to point your attention, this Imagine SIU 2030 campaign. Now, the goal is a $500 million campaign. And as you can see, to date, what's been raised is pretty phenomenal. And so again, hats off and credit to Matt and his staff. The timeline, we're ahead of schedule. The timeline, this particular campaign will end June thirtieth, one thousand and twenty-eight. So we still have thirty-one months left. So you can see the overall totals. You can see exactly the progress that is being made is pretty, pretty phenomenal and pretty aggressive. You know, Matt always points out it's the fifth highest fundraising campaign in Illinois Public University history. This is phenomenal work. And again, we wouldn't be able to give those scholarships and do a lot of the things that we're doing to attract students, to keep them from leaving the state of Illinois without these types of funds that you're seeing there. Next slide. You look at the last five months, and this is a chart that, you know, if you go back to two thousand and fifteen, take a look at where we were then and just follow that all the way up. You know, trustee Curtis, you mentioned two thousand and nineteen there. We've got that highlighted. But look forward, two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one, and look where it shoots up there from two thousand and twenty-five to two thousand and twenty-six. Again, just a phenomenal effort that is happening across our entire campus. So these are the dollars raised by fiscal year, year-to-date, as of December fourth. We thought we'd give you a little historical flavor of what's happening. So you'll see that the support is there. I think the people, you heard the video from the Saluki Takeovers, they are excited about the things that are happening here on campus, what people are doing to make our campus stand out and to be attractive for those new and traditional and non-traditional students. And that's what it's all about. We want to continue that success. That's a one-hundred-and-ninety-six percent increase, by the way, from last year. So that's a really big number. Our next slide highlights again something very special. I know we refer to Dr. David Newmeyer as the Godfather. And as you can see, here's the unveiling of this, just a wonderful, wonderful lobby naming for him. And I don't know, I don't see Dean Morgan over there cutting the tape there. I don't know if he's still here. Nope, he left. He took off. But just an amazing event. And if you talk to anyone that's ever come through that aviation program, they have so many great things to say about David and all of his contributions, what he's been able to do in changing lives for students, again, that have come through that program. So just really want to acknowledge and highlight him for that work. Next slide is the final slide, something that we do every year to really kick off the holiday season. We do it in conjunction with the chancellor's holiday reception. Me, along with my staff, we typically will greet, personally greet with a welcoming line, all of our faculty, staff, and students that are coming to enjoy breakfast. We did it the other day, and I think they really appreciate that. It's our way of really demonstrating servant leadership and what we do here to serve, not be served, but to serve the folks that work so hard. Then we transition into this room, which is a years of service or service recognition ceremony. So as you can see, four thousand nine hundred and twenty years of service from two hundred and eighty-four employees and a hundred retiree recognitions. Sarah does an amazing job coordinating and putting this together along with Nick Workman in recognizing. You can see a forty-year, I had one employee at forty years, one at thirty-five years. We had eight employees, nine, we're at thirty. I mean, that's a long time. And it's very rare to have employees work at an institution, at one institution, for that long. It's almost unheard of today. And so they're a fortitude, and they've seen a lot through the years, but they're still here, and they're smiling, and they're working hard for the institution, their loved ones within the audience. Jody, my right and left hand, is at twenty-five years. So just publicly congratulating her for that particular honor. But these are hard-working Salukis. They support our faculty, staff, our students. And we just wanted to make sure you knew who they were. And we'll have more information on the web to kind of show exactly who was recognized. Those are just numbers. But very appreciative as we head into the holiday season, we wanted to make sure we acknowledge their service to the institution. And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chancellor Lane. Dr. McDowell. Give the report for the medical school.
Secondly, and you've heard about this already today, we are very proud of the novel Lincoln Scholarship Program. And we think it will bring tremendous advantages to the rural environments of Central and Southern Illinois and really become an example of what other schools can be doing across the country. Finally, as our medical students move towards their residence and they look to become more competitive, they need new ways to differentiate themselves. And those five longitudinal medical student pathways And those five longitudinal medical student pathways provide them additional areas such as research, leadership, health equity focus, so they can differentiate themselves on their residency application. It's truly important for us moving forward. Next slide, please. Goal Two. Goal Two is really to meet the needs and continue to grow the workforce that we have to take care of our patients and run our educational programs. And as you know, we can't do anything without the growth and strength of that workforce. So what have we done over the past five and six years to actually make this improved? Once again, we're developing pipeline programs with local high schools and other educational institutions to bring early exposure so people will consider SIU School of Medicine as a future employment option. We've worked hard to be more flexible with the needs of our workforce so that they can find a place that fits their life needs outside of the local environment. And probably most important to many of those in our workforce, we've invested over $4 million in compensation adjustments to make it more equitable and a more enticing place to work day in and day out. Excellent. Our goal number three is research, another one of our core tenets at SIU School of Medicine and our mission. And clearly, in order to be a successful and competitive medical school, you have to have a robust bench and clinical research infrastructure. We recognize that, and we have advanced that over the past five years. We've been able to upgrade more facilities, improve our infrastructure, and again, develop stronger regional ties. And of course, we are very proud of the contributions that our research团队 made to the recent designation of Southern Illinois University Carbondale as an R-run research institution. Next slide. Peer delivery. Peer delivery and how we actually meet the needs of our patients is evolving rapidly. In fact, it is hard to keep up. We have truly made a commitment to become more patient-focused. And you can really measure that in the way that we've grown, how we meet our patients. During the pandemic, we worked hard to expand telehealth service access overnight. And we've continued that contribution and that commitment to meeting patients where they need us as we grow our telehealth services moving forward. We're also much more aware of the importance of patient experience. We developed a robust patient experience team, a new infrastructure, and we have allowed ourselves new access to clinical dashboards which show all leaders across the organization, patient access, patient volume, patient efficiencies. These are game changers and really necessary so that we can meet patient needs when they have them and where they are. Next slide. The work environment. Anyone associated with healthcare is acutely aware of how challenging the work environment has become. We have made a significant commitment to do everything we can to improve this. Thomas Lee is the CEO and a Harvard-trained physician of Press Gaming, a market leader in patient satisfaction firms across the country. And his recent book, Social Capital in Healthcare, he clearly makes the point that work environments pivot around the success, or lack thereof, of the most proximal frontline leader. We understand that, and I see that when I'm in the emergency department. Therefore, we have worked hard to improve our role and software, our coaching opportunities, and our leadership development across all levels of the organization and our workforce. We recognize that that's an essential part of providing an environment where our employees, our learners, and our patients can really thrive. There's more work to be done, but we're excited about the progress we've made, and we look forward to making more of that moving forward. Next slide. Next is our external partnerships. And as you've heard before today and many times in the past, as a community-based medical school, partnerships are essential to our function. We spend a lot of time talking about the importance of our hospital partners. But we've grown beyond that over the last six years to partner with other areas as well. One that we're really proud of is co-founding the Behavioral Health Workforce Center and the Associated Office of Certification Strategies. This is helping us to change what it looks like to receive behavioral health care across the state of Illinois. We are working to develop novel ways for patients to have access, ways to improve the care on college campuses, and really looking towards training a multidisciplinary healthcare workforce that meets behavioral health needs of the future. Next slide. In order to do all of these things, stewardship matters, probably more today than ever before. And it would not have been possible to have this balanced growth across all of our mission areas without a firm commitment to diversifying our revenue structure and truly stabilizing our financial position. There are some other advancements and new developments that I think are key to this success as well. The recognition of a need for an office strategy, project management, and enhanced business intelligence services are just helping us compete at a higher level. The development of a new strategic growth committee so that we can truly focus our practice growth where it matters and where it fits the needs of our market and our hospital partners has been a true mark moving forward. Finally, we are really excited about the transformation that will come as we move into the Epic Electronic Health Record Platform. It will be a true game changer and a win for patients, staff, and their families. We can't get there soon enough. Next slide. Finally, improving the message. In the past five years, we have truly elevated the awareness of our brand and the recognition of what SIU School of Medicine is all about. For years, we've been known as a great educational institution, but I think patients in our reach now see us as a full source of comprehensive care and a true partner with our hospitals in the region to provide the best patient care. And that's been a very concerted effort from the part of the dean, our leaders, and the Office of Marketing and Communication. We've had great success with our champions' brand story, and we look forward to continuing to deliver this message. I would say on a personal note, this is really something that I have seen over the last five and 10 years. And Dean Cruz deserves a lot of credit for elevating what our brand is and the recognition of it across the region. Next slide. In conclusion, it's been a pleasure to be able to share with you today the successes that we've had despite many challenges across all of our four mission areas. We've been able to do this because of a strong group of employees and people who are committed to what we do at SIU School of Medicine. We think our achievements reflect a true commitment to the purpose-driven and community-centered innovation that will continue to position SIU Medicine well to lead with even greater impact in the future. As I close, I want to personally thank Dr. Cruz for his extraordinary leadership across all of these areas and the way that he continually works and strives to keep SIU School of Medicine moving forward. I'm happy to take any questions.
One of the first slides you had a patent. There was a little point that said there was a patent that was around AI. David Labor said, can you just talk a little bit about that patent and about that?
Sure. So I think what we're referring to is some work of Dr. Richard Sellenfreund, who has done work in the space of AR, AI, and artificial intelligence. And I should clarify that educational institutions are nervous about AI. What's unique about his research is he's trying to work on developing patient avatars so we can use AI to train somebody more quickly. When we train with standardized patients, which is a Hall of Fame foundation at SIU advanced 47 years ago, it's expensive and time-consuming. If we find a learner who has a hard time maybe breaking the ice, starting an introduction, imagine an AI-powered interface where you can practice this 15 times before your next encounter. It's truly a game changer, and the realness of the avatars that are being developed, it's pretty remarkable. And there's more success to come with them. Thank you, Dr. McDowell. Thank you. Thanks for hiring.
Thank you, Chair Gilbert. I will just start, I got a short presentation, but I want to appreciate and underscore the presentations that have been made today. I'm actually inspired by them and just really taken by the work that is happening across the system. I also want to congratulate Chancellor Lane that the fundraising numbers that went up on the screen are remarkable. So congratulations to you and your team. That is not an easy feat and extremely commendable. I want to start my presentation with homecoming. Some of you have heard me talk about the evolution of homecoming at SIUE. With the tradition of being a commuter institution and no football program, we have struggled early on to figure out what homecoming is and means at SIUE. I think we have figured that out. It is officially now Homecoming and Family Weekend at SIUE. And I want to just show you a short video clip to give you a sense of what that's like. So over the course of the weekend, we have, this fall, experienced record registration. More than 5,000 individuals have registered for some activity over the weekend. Record participation for the race, which is a 5K, 10K run-walk. I think this year we had more than 620 individuals register for that event, and that is up from 337 just a few short years ago. So that's remarkable. You see there, one of the things I want to mention about the weekend is not only do we have the race, there's an NPHCR show, there are family-friendly activities. And this photo is perhaps one of the more remarkable developments for Homecoming and Family Weekend is that we intentionally invite family members of our current students to come back and to participate in homecoming. And it is interesting, it also happens to be the opportunity, the time in the fall semester where some version of being homesick kicks in for our first-year students. So to have their family members back on campus at some point during the fall semester has really turned out great. I want to draw your attention to two photos. One is the one in the middle. This was maybe Friday night, I guess it was, for Rock the Quad. We've got a live band, the Quad transforms into a very special place. But this individual, there's a student in this photo, and there were roughly nine members of her family who ascended on campus for the weekend just to celebrate with the student for homecoming. And in the photo, you can't see it here, our grandparents, parents, and younger siblings in that photo, which is really remarkable. It is sort of the personification of what we mean when we say Family Weekend. The other photo I want to bring to your attention on the right side of the screen, the middle image, is Sergio. He is a transfer student. He's an engineering student. I don't know if you can see his T-shirt, it says solar on it. He's a member of our solar car team in the School of Engineering, but he's a transfer student, and his parents are there. Now, the photo ops happen on Sunday. I learned this this year, but for family members who are lingering on Sunday, who are still around for Sunday morning, we offer them breakfast in the muck and an opportunity to take a professional photo, if you will, with our campus photographer. And there are prompts and props and things that they can use. Sergio, so I happened to be there Sunday. I happened to talk to Sergio's parents, who said to me, this was the first time in his educational career, and they're talking kindergarten through this moment in time, where they felt welcomed in the educational community that he was a part of. And that was a really remarkable testament to what the weekend means for lots of family members. The next thing I'll just mention is Give Kids a Smile Day. Most of you know this is our 20th year for Give Kids a Smile. And this year, we combined it with a legislative staff visit. You'll see there in the top image, Representative Amy Elick, Representative Katie Stewart, their staffers from Representative Jay Hoffman's office, Representative Kevin Schmidt, and others photographed there who had an opportunity to visit the School of Dental Medicine and really see firsthand in terms of what we do in terms of the operation, but also the service we're providing to the community members across the region. I want to say thank you to John Charles, who's seated back there for helping us facilitate that visit. I don't have to tell you all how important it is to have members of our legislative body actually on campus. I want to just, before I get to Veterans Day, I want to just mention one other thing. For those of you who have not had a chance to attend Give Kids a Smile Day, I thought in my first to second year of attending that the focus was on the students who were receiving dental care and understanding how our faculty and students were serving these students who were arriving for our community. It took me maybe until the third go-round to realize that the real story was with the parents who were waiting for them to come out of the clinic. And when you talk to them, the number of individuals in our community who don't have dental insurance is significant. And they're living in communities where their access to dental care is limited. And so I've told the story a couple of times of the parent who said to me, this is the only time in any given year that her daughter is going to see a dentist. This year, I had an opportunity to meet a dad who was there, who had a similar story, who's driving an hour and a half to get to this clinic so that his son can be treated. It is really a remarkable part of our community outreach from the School of Dental Medicine. More than $90,000 of free dental services are provided on that day. We do, that happens in October. In November, we have a similar event for veterans. Over 92 veterans received service, roughly $50,000 in the value of care. This program is in its eighth year, so we do the same for veterans. And I believe there's a short news that...
Well, then we are at four as the country honors Veterans Day this week. Some dental students spent today helping heroes take care of their teeth. Today was the 8th Annual Veterans Care Day at the SIU School of Dentistry. Veterans who have served our country were able to stop by and get free dental care. Today's clinic was held at the dental office in Alton. They do travel around for this. Veterans were able to get x-rays, cleanings, fillings, and extractions. The free care is critical because so many veterans can't normally get access to dental care.
The overwhelming majority of veterans do not qualify for dental benefits through the VA. So many of these veterans don't have a dental home and are in need of dental services and go for long periods of time without care. So we're trying to get the word out ahead of time enough so they have enough time to find us. We have people that drive from two, three hours away to come here today.
Veterans who missed out today can pre-register ahead of next year's free dental care clinic. The SIU School of Dental Medicine has clinics in Alton, East St. Louis, and Edwardsville.
Just a short clip of the news coverage. I want to point out one other story. The person in the bottom left of the screen is obviously a veteran. His name is Kenia Margum, who drove an hour and a half to get to the clinic. This is a person who left home at 19, served six years in the US Army with roles in both infantry and intelligence with deployments to Bosnia. Is without dental insurance. And so again, sometimes I focused on the clinic, but the real stories are in that lobby and waiting area. So I just want to invite trustees or members of our university community who want to participate in that day. It's really special, and I'm really proud of Dr. Kay and the School of Dental Medicine team for providing this service to our community. Just a couple of other beats on the legislative visits. We had the opportunity to welcome Speaker Welch to our campus along with Representative Katie Stewart. Again, I can't underscore the importance of having members of the legislature on our campus to engage with our students and individuals who are leading our programs. This was an action-packed day. Again, thanks to JC and others on the team for helping to facilitate this visit. They got to learn about codes, which is a strand of our undergraduate curriculum you heard the provost talk about. We also were able to share information on them about what is developing in Belleville. They took a visit to the SIUE Cougar Cupboard, which is our name for food pantry on campus, and they were able to visit the SOAR office where students were gathered for tutoring. It's really interesting to watch both of them engage and interact with our students. They also had an opportunity to tour the new Health Sciences Building and the National Corn to Ethanol Research Center. So really action-packed visit, but I think a good touch point for two members of legislature. So I moved to the State House to Congress. We also had the opportunity to welcome Congresswoman Nikki Banzinski to the School of Nursing. And you can't see it from the image, but seated in front of her are a group of nursing students. And we've heard about the shortage of teachers, we've heard about the shortage of nurses. And it was really interesting. I didn't have a role here. I was just sort of participating. But to watch the Congresswoman engage our nursing students about the future of the profession and the things that they're concerned about, I think was a big lesson for many of us. But we were really appreciative. I thought she listened carefully to our students and genuinely was interested in what they had to share. So it's a very good visit, also a very nice touch point from a member of Congress on our campus. Second to last, we're still winning and retaining Luka Federal Grants. This is one of them. Dr. Chaya Gopalan, who is both in the School of Education, Healthy Human Behavior, and the School of Nursing, won a NSF Award in collaboration with Dr. Sharon Locke, who is a professor of environmental science and the director of SIUE STEM Center. They're leading a groundbreaking $2 million partnership that's funded by NSF. I want to read to you the title of the grant because I can't remember it. Developing STEM Education Reform Leaders Through a Multidisciplinary and Cross-Institutional Community Transformation. I don't know who came up with the title, but let me tell you what that actually means. Imagine faculty members who are teaching STEM both at the university level and across community colleges. So our partner for this project is St. Louis Community College. Groups of faculty members who are teaching STEM courses across those campuses get together to talk about and work through how to more effectively offer STEM education and post-secondary education. Really exciting project. And NSF grants, for those of you who have had the opportunity to pursue them, are extraordinarily competitive. And so for a faculty member at SIUE to be leading this project is really extraordinary. We want to highlight a member of our faculty who is doing excellent work. Second to last slide is Preview Day. We're not quite ready to start to talk about fall enrollment projections, but this is very encouraging. We were around our leadership team and the conversation one day was about capping the number of registrants for a preview day. And it was the first time in my history at SIUE that I'd heard that. It was a really great problem to have that we were oversubscribed for our largest ballroom space for students who were interested in attending SIUE or to just come check us out. It is a really great opportunity for us to preview the university and to showcase what we have to offer as a destination for students who are going to be transitioning to college. We, I want to just take one beat to appreciate the entire university community. This cuts across housing, dining, public safety, parking. Faculty members are making presentations from particular academic departments. It is an entire university effort. We spend a lot of time with our grounds crew to make sure the campus looks as well as it can for these opportunities to showcase the university. When we talk about enrollment management, one of the things that we know is happening is a number of institutions that a single student is applying to is north of 12. So the moment these students leave our campus, they're going to the next six, eight, 10 campuses. And you've got this really important opportunity to make an impression on them, which we have really improved our presentation of the university, which I'm very proud of. So hopefully, the interest translates into applications and admits and deposits and students moving into residence halls this fall. I'll keep the board updated as we progress throughout the enrollment cycle. Finally, Chancellor Lane, I want to confess that we have extracted every ounce of goodness out of our men's basketball success last season. I checked to see if there was anything else in there, and they went, no, we've extracted every ounce of goodness. It was the first time for us, a really big moment in the institution's trajectory. The banners went up this fall as we opened our basketball season, a really proud moment for the university. But this slide, I would argue, is the counterbalance to the conversation we had yesterday on college athletics. We recently received a report from the NCAA that ranks institutions on how well they're performing graduating student athletes. It's commonly referred to the GSR, the graduation success rate. And I was on the road with our athletic director, Andrew Gavin, who pulled me to the side and he whispered to me that we're number one. And I said, what, are you sure? And he says, yes, we've checked and we've double-checked. SIUE nationally is number one among all public universities for graduating student athletes, which is a remarkable feat when you look at the other institutions that are on that list. Net among all institutions, public and private, SIUE ranks number 17. The 16 universities ahead of us on that list are all private institutions. Now, I've tried to figure out different ways to translate this for people because I think just hearing it, people go, gee, that's nice. It is remarkable. It is remarkable. When you look at the other public institutions that SIUE ranks ahead of, it is just remarkable. I am grateful to the team and our athletics department and feel very fortunate. I inherited a culture where the student's performance in the classroom is as important and their performance in competition. And it is a really great compliment to the athletic success that we've had over the past season. Sergio, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Jacob Meyer.
Always wanted to just real quick to Dr. Meyer. Please don't cap those preview applicants. Think about preview days.
It's all looking good. No, no, I ask about overflow. I ask about whether we could do one in the morning, one in the evening. There are multiple dates throughout the year. And all of them this year have been either at capacity or overcapacity. So part of the conversation with our leadership team is how do we add additional dates to try to accommodate the students and families who are interested. So we're not in a position of turning anyone away.
Thank you, Jacob Meyer. First of all.
Yeah, I'll just start by saying congratulations on the graduation success rate. Clearly, that's our priority, is for all of our students to graduate and with our student athletes. And you can't get much better than number one in the country among public universities. So that's a big accomplishment. I think across the reports, you know, a couple of themes I think we see consistently is a number of places where we're setting records of some sort. You know, we certainly heard that with fundraising. This is the best five months we've had, but I think it's just about going to be the best year, even if we didn't raise another dime the rest of the year. We're pretty much at what our record was for an entire year, which is pretty remarkable. We saw it with the discussion of homecoming and how much that has grown at Edwardsville every single year. And so setting records there. And we just see that across school medicine, a number of ways where we're doing things that are better than we have ever done before, which someone who started their career focused very much on continuous improvement, that says a lot, and I think that's pretty meaningful. But related to all of that, I do want to say it's one of the things, and knowing enough about what we're doing in each of those areas, it really is very much a team effort and a lot of people go into that success. And when you look at the fundraising, you know, the stability we've had with fundraisers and across our foundation group has been really critical in doing that. And that's not typical sometimes in foundations where there's lots of turnover in fundraisers. The fact that we've had that kind of stability has helped. But we see that again with all of these different activities that we talked about, having good stability and good people in those roles make an enormous difference. Today, what I'm going to focus mostly on, earlier, we talked about some federal legislation that we had to pass some policies on to be in compliance. One of the things that's been around for a while is the Native American Graves Protection and Repatriation Act. And I'm going to ask Carol Samara to come up and talk about that. It's been around for a long time, but I'm not sure most people are as familiar with it as they should be. And kind of her efforts in leading us and trying to make sure we are in compliance. I will point out Carol is a two-time SIU Carbondale alum, both undergraduate and her law degree. And both her parents got her law degree from the law school here. So nice to have our alumni come back and people connect with the university, helping us in this episode, Carol.
Thank you, President Mahoney, Chairman, Judge Gilbert, and members of the board. I am very honored and excited to be here today to introduce you to our NAGRA work. And I will do this by starting with the legal background and the weight of history behind the work that we do with NAGRA compliance. So the Native American Graves Protection Repatriation Act, NAGRA, is codified at Title 25 of the United States Code. And this title is entirely dedicated to federal Indian law, which means that NAGRA was enacted in recognition of the unique government-to-government political relationship between the United States and federally recognized Indian tribes. The legal foundation of NAGRA is upholding the federal government's treaty obligations and trust responsibility towards tribes. And there are currently 574 tribes with federal recognition. So Native American, when we're talking about NAGRA, is a political category. It's not an ethnic or racial one. Tribal nations are communities of people, but they are also sovereign governmental entities. And the overarching federal duty towards tribes is meaningful government-to-government consultation before carrying out actions or making decisions that impact a tribe's interests. So what are tribal nation sovereign interests recognized by NAGRA? And how does that affect universities like SIU? Tribes are inherent sovereigns that predate sovereignty of the United States. And they retain all aspects of their sovereignty unless treaties or Congress have explicitly divested them of specific powers. So NAGRA, as a law, recognizes that tribes retain their sovereignty over their ancestors and their cultural heritage. And NAGRA, in effect, delegates the federal duty to meaningfully consult to, quote, "any institution or state or local government agency, including any institution of higher learning within the United States that receives federal funds and has possession or control of holding or collection." I'm sorry. So this is the right, so the regulations, word for word. I don't like to paraphrase regulations, so they're there. So universities have a big responsibility here. And even more so because NAGRA regulations underwent major updates effective January 2024. Under NAGRA, universities such as SIU are required to both protect and restore Native American human remains, funerary objects, sacred objects, and objects of cultural patrimony to lineal descendants, Indian tribes, and Native Hawaiian organizations. And NAGRA requires consultation with tribes and deference to Native American traditional knowledge. The updated regulations and SIU recognize that tribes are the experts in their own cultural heritage. And SIU is committed to putting forth good faith efforts to implement the duty of care instructions from our tribal and Native Hawaiian organization partners. And I will add that these duties and commitments also align with this university's land acknowledgement, which is really better titled as a people acknowledgement. To meet our compliance obligations, we've begun with SIU's existing next slide. To meet our new compliance obligations, we've begun with SIU's existing museum infrastructure and the NAGRA eligible collections within those units. SIU has three flagship museums, the Sharp Museum at SIU Carbondale, the University Museum at SIU Edwardsville, and the Pearson Museum at SIU School of Medicine. But by far, the greatest NAGRA compliance responsibilities fall under the Center for Archaeological Investigations, the CAI at SIU Carbondale, which is an archaeological repository, both for SIU and for federal agencies. Each of SIU's collecting units must be adequately resourced to meet the needs of this moment and to ensure that the university as a whole is compliant in good faith with the updated regulations. Next slide. Remember, the entire university is subject to NAGRA. And SIU must identify and consult on all NAGRA eligible holdings. And this slide, defining a holding or collection under NAGRA, will give you an idea of just how encompassing these requirements are. Now, the good news. We are making progress. Despite the odds, we timely notified federal agencies of holdings in compliance with deadlines earlier this year. And working with several agencies, we confirmed federal control over numerous collections held at SIU, including 31 Native American individuals that previously were reported as under SIU control. And including archaeological collections dating from excavations as far back as the 1930s. This means that those federal agencies are now responsible for carrying out the NAGRA process associated with those collections. And we are seeing that federal agencies are prioritizing NAGRA compliance, as evidenced by SIU receiving in-person visits from agency representatives to inventory their collections this year. Now that SIU has much better understanding of which holdings are in our control, we are reaching out in earnest to tribes and beginning to build relationships and to move forward with consultation and reengage with tribes as we move forward with NAGRA compliance. As we continue our work to meet this incredible moment and responsibility, I invite you to recognize that NAGRA compliance can be where this institution, this university, shows its leadership and builds its legacy. NAGRA compliance is our responsibility. And it is an incredible opportunity for SIU as well. It's a heavy lift, but it's not a burden. It is a value driver. And NAGRA compliance will continue to move this institution forward. NAGRA compliance lifts SIU not only by strengthening trust, but by building truly meaningful relationships and partnerships, by protecting and enhancing our reputation, and by fulfilling the promises of our land acknowledgement, our code of ethics, our institutional mission, and our strategic plan. I welcome questions at this time, and I also would like to mention, I would be remiss if I didn't mention Vice President Dr. Sheila Caldwell, who has been an instrumental leader in elevating NAGRA here at SIU.
I have a question. Can you, I often hear universities acknowledging their land and acknowledging the tribes that previously lived and occupied that land. Is that part of this act?
No.
Okay, no.
This is currently having to do with the human remains and the cultural items that are held at institutions.
And do you know if, and the chancellors may be able to answer this question, when we have tours on our campuses, are we acknowledging the the Indian cultures and tribes that resided on where we occupy space?
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you, Carol. I appreciate it. This is important work, and we appreciate your leadership and helping us do this. This was one that was a challenge for us, frankly, before Carol came on board. We've made a lot of progress. She talked about that a little bit, but I think it's important knowledge. There's been a lot of progress made in this area. And while we do have a land acknowledgement statement that we do read at a lot of events, both system events as well as campus events. So that is a common thing that we do as well. Thank you. Just real quickly, some updates from the Office for Community Engagement and Institute for Rural Health. Their Office for Community Engagement continues to do good work in a lot of different ways, including working with the campuses on Clean Energy Contractor Incubator Grant, which we received, as well as working with a number of groups such as the Alton Housing Authority, the Alton Medical District, Imagine Bunker Hill. So a lot of different activities that they continue to do to help support our communities. Connie Price-Burlock is also leading the search for a new director for the Institute for Rural Health, and that process is going on right now. Jeff Franklin, who was the interim who was the interim director, is retiring. So we are we're in the process of that search as well. So those are my updates. Happy to answer any other questions.
Any questions for President Mahoney? I thank you very much to uh the chancellors and and uh Dr. McDowell and President Mahoney for wonderful reports. That said, everybody, this system is moving forward and going up. And it's due to the uh leadership that we have on respective campuses. Our next item is the call for the omnibus motion. Trustees had approximately ten days to study the items on the agenda. Certain number of items are routine routine or self-explanatory. So at the same time, we acted upon them in one motion, one vote. Lieutenant Secretary, please read the items suggested for the omnibus motion.
The omnibus motion will include Board Agenda Items F through J and Board Agenda Items L through V.
Is there any discussion? Is there a motion to approve these items for the omnibus motion? Go move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. We're not going to ask for a roll call vote.
Abecena?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Hightower?
Yes.
Salver?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
I declare the omnibus motion is passed. Next, it's the consideration for item K, recommendation for an honorary degree, SIUC. Do I have a motion to approve this item?
So.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Uh maybe a roll call vote.
Abecena?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Hightower?
Yes.
Salver?
Yes.
Simmons?
There's that, there's that pause again.
Yes.
Yes.
And Gilbert.
I'm staying. I declare the motion is passed. Before I conclude the business of the meeting, I want to I appreciate the gesture and the and the um recommendation by this board, the university, and the Simmons School of Law for this recognition. I let Paul call me about a week ago and said, can you stop by the Soul Center? And I thought she wanted me to sign something, and then she she showed me this uh resolution. And I said, you know, it it's not right, not necessary. I'm just doing my job. Uh but I appreciate the the recognition. I will say this, every board member deserves recognition for every one of you valiant public servants that have given back to your communities as well as serving on this board. So I share this recognition with all of you as well as the many people past and present who have guided and directed me during my life's journey. So I appreciate it to them. And I appreciate it's not necessary, but I appreciate the recognition. That concludes the business of the board trustees. The next regular scheduled meeting of the board is planned to be held February fifth twenty twenty-five at the SIU Edwardsville campus. The news conference will be held immediately at the conclusion of this meeting. I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'm second.
Second.
It's been uh moved and seconded. Roll call vote.
Abecena?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Hightower?
Yes.
Salver?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes. I declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you to Dr. Hightower and the trustee Salver for um participation in the virtual. Have a great day, everybody.
Thank you all.
Myself now, and Chris and I, we're going to stay on this. Thank you so much, all very fast. Please let me know if the two gets early. Sleep. I will, so I know you.